Well, I see myself, I don't hear myself. There we go. Okay. Get this thing, get this thing rolling. Got the October 19th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Going to start by opening the floor to the audience for 20 minutes to address City Council on matters that are on the agenda. After the City Council discusses with staff, we ask the persons wishing to address the council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, Pro Tem, and profanity may not be used in any form. However, I hear that there is no one on the sign-in sheet, so we can close that part of the meeting. Our first item on here is the American Rescue Act Funding. Melissa Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Good evening. Tonight, we are here to provide an update on the American Rescue Plan for City Council. And those that are listening at home, unfortunately, Todd Kupsek of our Administrative Consulting Services firm for our grant consultants got tied up and could not make it. He was delayed through an airport, so it's one of those things. But he and I had a phone conversation today, and I'll report on some of the things that we discussed on. But as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the City of Raleigh Meadows is eligible to receive $3,199,039 from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Now, this is considered an allotment for non-entitlement units of government, or NEUs, and the Department of Economic, or Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, or DCEO, is currently the entity that we will report to. There was recently a notice back to our municipality that we were first to report by October 31st, 2021, but DCEO has said now it's extended to April 2022. And the reason being is they're just working through their parts of setting up the portal and other requirements. The City of Raleigh Meadows received the first of two installments, so they split the funds in half, and we received $1,599,519. We kind of say 1.6 to round, but 1.6 million dollars. Finance staff is responsible for the quarterly reporting, although Todd Kupsek of our Administrative Consulting Specialist Firm also will be helping us, similar to what we went through with the CARES Act funding. The funds are maintained on the city's balance sheet, and that's important to remember that as well, because the city considers that unearned revenue, so we will report that on our city's balance sheet in the city's audit at year end. The second installment will be transmitted over to the city in 2022, so it's two parts. We maintain those funds on the city's balance sheet, so it's not included in the 2022 budget, and we will make sure that we report back continually to the City Council. One of the things that we talked about at our last Committee of the Whole Meeting was to make sure that we're keeping track of the various entities out there and their municipalities, and what they're potentially spending money on. We've also talked about some of the eligible uses, and I wanted to bring back that information. Todd and I talked this afternoon, and he did provide some information in the council packet, but a lot of the clients that he's been tracking, about 80%, fall under mostly infrastructure for stormwater, water, sewer, and all of the infrastructure that would be related to those items. He did provide a list, and they're all listed in the packet, from clean water all the way to drinking water. A lot of this information, again, the regulations and the administrative piece is currently being worked on as far as looking at what the eligible uses are. Other projects to be funded, some things that have come up as far as parking lot resurfacing, roadway, street repairs, HVAC replacement, and technology upgrades, and I think those are important uses as well. Again, it's good to benchmark across our municipal partners to see what they're also using the funds for. Tonight's update is merely to kind of give you an update as we've received our first allotment. It is on the city, it'll be on the city's balance sheet. We also will be tracking what other municipalities are potentially using the funding for. Mark Fowler of the Northwest Municipal Conference, he provided some information too, and I wanted to review that as well. Some of the tracking of potential uses include water main replacements, premium pay for essential workers, social service programs and organizations, and community assistance, business support grants, and funding to other special districts as well. What's important is to track this type, these types of eligible uses. To put a little bit more information on this too, there is a pool of ARPA money for the state, and there's a pool that's delivered strictly to the municipality based on the allotment. We receive our, we've already received that first half. There's also talk out there too about the allotment that comes from the state, how we look at those types of uses on their side and in conjunction to what the city has received. So you do have time to review this. We also had a meeting this week with our city's auditors, because we're preparing for our city's audit, and we're talking about ARPA funding. In 2022, there will be an opportunity for the City Council to start to identify what types of projects, and looking at all those projects. Some of that, the regulations now are just telling us that by December 31st, 2026, is when all the funding should be spent down, so you do have time. We have been recommending, of course, looking at the eligible uses such as infrastructure for water and sewer, but some of the things that have come out of this too, just to kind of give you another update on that, is looking at those eligible uses. Our auditors provided us some information, and they also have webinars that we're looking at too and taking part of. Cook County and DCEO also have webinars. But the four eligible uses, the broad-based categories, public health and negative economic impacts. There's a category called premium pay for essential workers, a category called investments in water, sewer, and broadband, and the last category is revenue loss. Those are the broad-based categories. What we started to do in finance this week is go through the revenue loss calculation. That calculation is necessary for us to prove that there was revenue loss in 2020 due to COVID-19 into 2021, and we'll complete that revenue loss calculation, because then if you complete that, there may be other infrastructure projects such as roadway projects that you may be eligible to use the funding for. So through the Government Finance Officers Association, they have a template that we're able to use. We started the revenue loss calculation. You take your audited financials and go through the calculation. Once we get that done, then we'll be working with the auditors also, just to keep tabs on what others are doing out there, and then through some of the audited recommendations too. So tonight was merely just an update to let you know, number one, we received the funds, number two, that the eligible uses are still being monitored and benchmarked out there, and we started the initial piece, which is the best practice of doing the revenue loss calculation, so that in the event that you want to go beyond just water and sewer infrastructure projects such as roadway resurfacing projects, parking lot improvements, and other improvements for the city, you'll have that basis already calculated so that you have opportunities going forward. So at this point, you know, we've discussed this back from April, August, and September. We'll continue to keep you updated. Todd apologizes for being stuck in an airport, but he will definitely come out and speak with you further. And all of our city departments, I wanted to mention too, are taking place in various webinars, because it does touch all our city departments in some form or fashion. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's tonight's ARPA fund update.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next topic then. Our 2022 library budget. Dave Ruff.
First, let me thank you for taking some time out here. Let me come and talk about the library levy. I know you got a busy night, so I'll try to get right at it. I think you have the paper copy of my presentation, and I'm going to try to make the electronic copy work as well. The first screen that you see is, shows basically what our levy increase is. It's a 1.8% increase this year, but it's coming after two years of decreases, a 2% and a 1.2%. It won't quite bring us back to where we were in 2019, but it's going to be adequate for what we need to do to go ahead and protect operations. I'll get into some of the things that are coming up over the next couple of years as well. If you go to page two, what you'll see is that the average library property tax increase per resident is a dollar and three cents. I used to say that would buy you a cup of coffee, and now with tax, I don't believe it will. But that's the, that's the increase, and again, we're working hard to try to make sure that we keep that as reasonable as possible. And by the way, any of you that have seen me do this before know that there's no flow to interrupt, so if you have questions or anything, go ahead and just, just jump in right away. Okay, if you go to page three, you're going to see that we are very, very dependent upon property taxes. 97% of our levy, or I'm sorry, of our operating budget comes from property taxes, and only about 3% from other funds. If you look on page four, you'll see the dollar amounts are involved, and so what is that other that we're talking about? Well, it's primarily PPRT, which I know you're familiar with, and the library gets 26% of what the city gets for PPRT, and then also a per capita grant from the state. There are some strings attached to that, and I'll go into that a little bit further on, but you've got to be a member of the library system to qualify for the per capita grant, and that's about $35,000, so it's important for us. Other things, interest income, fines and fees, although we don't have fines anymore. During COVID, we did a little bit of a study, and we found out we were spending a heck of a lot of money to recover not very much, so that the net differential was about, a little under $10,000. And the board decided that especially during COVID, we wanted to make it as easy for people to come in and take materials as they could. Now, it's not entirely without some recourse. If people don't bring things in, then we temporarily suspend their card. The odd thing is, and I guess this shows people pulling together during a crisis, we've actually noticed that things are coming back faster than they did when we had fines. And we have all sorts of, sort of amateur psychological reasons that we could give you for that, but we don't know. But anyway, it's working, it's working very well. Well, here's our expenditure history going back to 2003, and I want to point out especially those two spikes that you see, 2017 and 2019, and those were the two building expansions that we did, the west and the north expansions. And I think the important thing to see is what happened after 2019. We did not leave the levy up there, we brought it back down, and so it's, it's been really a gentle increase but for those two times. I'll also point out, if you go to the next page, this one breaks out the operating expenditures and reserve funds. So this is where those, this is the department that those expansions were put in. And again, if you look at that west and north expansion, I think the important line is the one after 2019, because we did not leave the levy up high, we brought it back down, the budget, and we were very grateful that we were able to do both of those projects on time, under budget, and neither one of them created any debt whatsoever. We saved up our money, spent it out, and that's how we do our projects. We have another one coming up in 2023, wherein we're going to replace the carpeting that we put in in 2002. At that time, the people that were installing it were telling us, ah, public building, you get about 12 years out of it, and we're going to be coming up on 21 years, and that's, I think that's a testament to, one, the carpet we bought, and secondly, our maintenance staff has done a wonderful job. But it's starting to show its age, and in two years, we're going to have to do something about it. Originally, we were going to do it in 2020, and then we bumped it back a little bit, because we wanted to save up our money from the last expansion, so it was going to be 21. And then we decided shutting down to go ahead and install carpeting is not anything that any resident needed after being shut down in 2020, so we're bumping it down a little bit. But part of what's in this budget is to rebuild those reserve funds to go ahead and do it. And we've got a program set up that goes, has all of our capital projects through 2042, and that way, we know how much money we need, and we're able to gently move up to it and not have to do any kind of balloon levies. Okay, staffing history. This is one that, I think the story behind this graph is that there are no gimmicks here. We, we did a lot of cross-training. We have roaming customer service, so that these are people that are trained to work at any desk, so instead of hiring extra people for each desk, we have the roamers will go wherever the crush is at that moment. So they may work in three different public desks as the second chair on any given evening. That can happen. The reason I say there's no gimmicks here is that when we took a reduction, you can see from this, we did not follow it up with an increase. We were very careful about our reductions, and we maintained them, so there's no, there's nothing unusual about how we went about it. And for 2022, we're anticipating a 2.5% reduction in staff. That's coming a little bit from all the departments but for maintenance and reference. Maintenance is getting a little bump up, and reference is staying solid, so that'll be a 2.5. The way we like to do these things is through attrition rather than releasing anybody, and I'm happy to say that's what we did here too. Well, materials normally is even boring for me to talk about, the materials budget, because it's formulaic. If you want to be part of the library system, and you want to qualify for the per capita grants, and reciprocal borrowing, and air library loan, and all those things, you have to spend at least 12% of your non-capital budget on materials. And that's plenty for us, because we are what's known as a mature library. All of our shelves are full, so for every box of books that comes in, we have to get rid of a box of books, and so that's where the friends come in for our book sales. So 12% is just fine. Now, this year, we're going to see we're going up to 441,000, which is a $17,000 increase, and again, that's just by virtue of formula, but we can't drop below that 12% mark. I think what is instructive and what got interesting to us is the next couple of slides. First, if you look at number nine, you see that we're projecting an 8% increase by the end of the year here, over what we had last year. That's always sort of interesting. You would expect with all the disruptions that occurred in 2020, you would expect some increase, but eight's pretty, pretty solid. Where it gets interesting is on slide 10. This is, these are e-materials expenditures, and by that we mean electronic books and music, and consortium fees are, there are a number, hundreds of libraries in the Chicago area, a number of them have banded together, and they all have access to about 175,000 e-materials. But the trick is, you got to wait in line. Yes, you got access to a lot of stuff, but so do all those hundreds of thousands of patrons, so sometimes you have to wait in line. So when I indicate that we have owned books, owned ebooks, those are things that we purchase that only our residents, only our cardholders have access to, so we have a mix of both things. There's about, for instance, 6,500 ebooks that we own that are just for our people, and then there's 175,000, and now there's a third category, and I'll get back to that in a minute. I do want to point out though, if you look at what happened between 2018 and 2019 on how much money we were putting into electronic materials, we thought we were really pushing the envelope there, increasing, you know, almost doubling the amount of money we're spending, and then look what happened in 2020. That accelerated what we were already headed to do, but we had to sort of make lemonade out of our lemons. You remember 2020, we were shut down for two months by virtue of the state order, shutting everything down. So for two months, we couldn't order books, we couldn't receive books and process them, we couldn't catalog them, everything came to a stop. What we could do though, and we didn't know when we were going to be able to open the building again, is really start putting, shifting money into electronic materials that would be available to all of our patrons remotely, and we hoped that they were going to go ahead and respond and use that. So if you go to the next screen, 11, you can see that the circulation of those e-materials is starting to catch. Now, this is where, if you look at the parenthetical under the title there, this includes owned materials, which I've explained, and consortium materials, which I've explained. It does not include, because we haven't even had a year yet of experience with it, what are called metered items, and we're starting to get more and more into metered items, and those are pay-per-view almost, with hoopla and canopy and sources like that, where they charge us per checkout of those materials. You don't own them, you're not required to pay any certain amount per year, it's just metered, and you set a limit, and you tell them, okay, when I circulate this many items, stop, and check with us again so that we don't run out of money. But I'm guessing that that's, that metered information is probably going to cost us about $10,000, and my guess is we're going to increase circulation by about that much, but those metered items are not on this graph. And that takes us back to where we started. Couple of levy decreases, this will be an increase, and it'll bring us back to a little bit under where we were in 2019. That's a big overview. Does anybody have any questions about how we got to all this?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ruff.
Well, thank you so much, and by the way, I want to thank you all for all the hospitality and the support over the years, and I want to thank Melissa as well, because as you know, she assists the library in some of the work that we do, but it has been a real pleasure working with all of you. Thanks.
Okay. Next up is our third item, the fiscal year 2022 city budget. Director Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Just give us just a moment to swap out the PowerPoint presentations. Thank you. Tonight, we are here to provide what would be a Committee of the Whole Meeting on the FY 2022 budget, the city's financial planning document, and also what I would tell you is, it's a city's tool to tell you, tell the story of the data in the budget. And we'll go through the PowerPoint presentation. There is a link to the city's budget online at the city's transparency tab. As we go through the budget presentation document, feel free to ask questions, let me know if you have any comments as well. We're very, very proud of our commitment here at the City of Raleigh Meadows to financial excellence and fiscal responsibility. Over the last 10 years, the City of Raleigh Meadows has developed consistent financial policies for the city's funds, primarily the general fund back in 2014, the refuse fund in 2015, the 911 fund in 2016, and the garage fund in 2019. Fund balance policies are best practices, and the Government Finance Officers Award Program, they also acknowledge the significant commitment to financial stewardship of our resources. The City of Raleigh Meadows is committed The City of Rolling Meadows is committed to long-term financial outlook for the city's operating and capital needs. And most recently, we were awarded the Triple Crown Award, which means that we were able to achieve three awards in one year for 2019. We are one of 24 local governments in Illinois to receive the Certificate of Achievement Award for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the audit, and then also the Distinguished Budget Award and the Popular Annual Financial Report, which is really our citizens' annual financial report, as we like to term it, because it's a shortened report that details all of the information in the city's audit. We will also, at the end of this year, when the audit, the adopted budget is completed, we will submit for the Government Finance Officers Award Program as well for the budget. The city's credit rating is a strong credit rating, and it is something that we're very proud of over the last several years. Standard and Poor's, it's an AA+, and Moody's is an AA3. The grid shows you that we're right just, we're just below AAA, and I think it's very significant in the fact that we have strong, a strong credit rating and outlook for the City of Rolling Meadows. We were just surveilled recently from Moody's and reaffirmed just most recently, a month or so ago. Both credit rating agencies also take a look at your best practices and then all of the financial policies that you have in place. And they favorably look at the GFOA programs as well. The 2022 budget, as I mentioned, there's a link on the city's website, but we also are in our second year of a budget in brief, which is just a short document, just highlights the overall high-level information in the budget. That is also, there's a link in the agenda packet as well for that and on the city's website. The 2022 budget does show that there is no tax levy increase year over year for the city's overall property tax levy. There are no rate increases for water, sewer, stormwater, or refuse. This budget does demonstrate that it has continued investments in capital, infrastructure, and the general fund maintains a 27% fund balance, which means about three to four months of reserves on hand. So far, we have completed the public hearings for the 2022 budget. September 28th was the truth in taxation or the tax levy. And then also, the city and budget, city budget and library budget completed the hearings on October 12th. And these are all requirements of state statute. In the 2022 budget, as I've mentioned, there is no property tax levy, so it is a flat levy or a 0% for 2022 budget, as it currently stands. The property tax levy does continue to fund per actuarially sound reports, funding. It is financially sound funding for our fire, police, and IMRF funds. Our pension funds are funded with actually sound principles. The general fund is in parameters at 27%, which means it's about $9.9 million or two to, or three to four months of operating reserves on hand. We are in the second year of the Victims of Crime Act grant funding opportunity, which helps us fund our social work activities. So it's called a VOCA grant. That continues for next year. Our 2022 budget also has a line item for the Salvation Army Grant of $30,000. And our funds are within fund balance policy for those that are, do have fund balance policies, with the exception of the refuse fund, and I'll, I'll touch on that at the end. As mentioned, there are no rate increases for utilities, and the funds are budgeted for the changeover for carts as well for the refuse fund. There are two electric charging stations that are included in the 2022 budget, and that is for City Hall for public use and then also for city use. And the vehicle and equipment, the Vehicle Replacement Committee is also reviewing that information in detail as well. The 2022 budget does continue the investment in capital. As mentioned earlier tonight, it does not include American Rescue Act funding that is not budgeted for. So as a footnote to that, it's next year, when those funds are eventually determined on the eligible use by city council, then you would bring those into your budget as an amended, a budget amendment. In the 2022 budget, just as we took the approach for 2021, it's a budget that can respond to uncertainty, and then it can also respond to the ongoing pandemic as we move along. What's important to that is that we were able, able to pivot last year very quickly to respond and make sure that our capital needs were being met as best as possible, and then we also had reserves on hand. This budget also provides high-quality services and responds in that way as well. The next slide will show you the fund balance summary sheet for the 2022 budget. The takeaway on this slide shows every single fund with the estimated ending fund balance for 2021, revenues for each fund, expenditures for each fund, and the estimated ending fund balance for the 2022 budget. What's important in this slide is that there is only one fund that is negative, which we, we are fully aware of that, which is TIF number two, it's the Kirchhoff Owl TIF, that eventually will become positive as the increment still comes in. About 2025 to 2026 is when that TIF closes out. I think what's also noteworthy, too, is that our utilities fund is doing exactly what it was proposed to do through the utility rate stable, utility, utility rate study in that we had utility rate stabilization. We issued debt a few years ago to make sure that our water main improvements were taking place in a timely fashion. More work needs to be done, as we know, but at the same point, rates are not increased this year, and we have adequate fund balance. At some point, I've also mentioned in the past that a fund balance policy should be evaluated for this fund. About 25% fund balance, about three months' worth of reserves, is the best practice from American Public Works Association and also the Government Finance Officers Association. At this point, it's about a 25% fund balance we've been tracking along, so there's been a really solid headway, and you want that track record before you establish a fund balance policy. The next slide will show you high level with all the funds all-in, what the revenues look like for all funds all-in. You can see that we're about a little more than 25% or 26% for property taxes. When you take in all of your revenues across all the funds, property taxes support 26% of the entire pie. Now, charges for service would be things like water and sewer and stormwater and refuse. That's the next slide, largest slice. And then other intergovernmental and taxes. You can see that it's a very diverse revenue stream for the City of Rolling Meadows. In fact, our credit rating agencies also mention that because we're such a diverse city in terms of a revenue mix, it favors well when we go through a credit rating review. In addition, that helps us weather those storms such as the COVID pandemic. We were able to make sure that we have other resources, not all in one bucket. I think what's also important to this, too, is that we don't rely heavily on one source or another. And I think it shows in the makeup of all our revenues all-in. The next slide will show you the total city expenditures by source. And this slide is important, too, because what we do here at the City of Rolling Meadows is provide service. And our services between public works, fire, police, administration, IT, all of our sources of services that we provide are very crucial and vital to the community, community development. All the things that we do are service providers, and that shows in the types of categories that most, about 80% of our general fund is salary and benefits. That's because we're a service provider. We do have about 14% of our entire budget committed to capital. Again, keeping up with capital is important with the size of a community that we have. And I think looking at those ARPA funds, again, going forward, will be very vital to the success of Rolling Meadows, because that is a quite a large influx of dollars to this community. And then other types of resources that might be, potentially be out there beyond the ARPA We always take a quick look at how we weather against other taxing bodies, and I think this is an important one, that 16 cents out of every dollar comes back to the City of Rolling Meadows. When you look at that, for instance, if your property tax bill was $10,000, that, or $10,000, you have 16 cents of every dollar of that come back to the City of Rolling Meadows. You can see the other slices, and I, and I think this is important, too, that about 65% of the property tax bill goes to schools, and that's how the, the property tax bills are structured. We share this information with folks that come into our front counter. There are lots of people that come in and into the City of Rolling Meadows asking, can you show us a little bit more? Can you tell us about how our property tax dollars are at work? We let them know that this is an important piece to share with you as we're discussing the property tax bill. Moving on to the property tax levy is presented in the 2022 budget. The property tax levy for 2022 has a $0 change year over year. What that means is that there is no levy increase for 2022 as presented and proposed. We'll discuss a little bit more at the end of this presentation with some other options that through our one-on-one budget meetings that we've been having with the city council, mayor and the city council, there've been some requests for information, and we'll review that at the end. Just comparing year-over-year property tax levy line items in the property tax chart here, what is of particular note is that the actuarial report data is, is detailed out. So there is a slight increase for the police pension, and there's a slight decrease for the fire pension. That's data straight from the actuary reports. There's a slight increase for IMRF pension and a slight increase for public works operations. Again, these are parts of how you build the property tax levy. There is no annual street program increase, not to say in the future, that can be evaluated as other opportunities exist in the future. And then the levy for the 911 service, which is really the only revenue into 911. With that then, below the line, so in the blue there with an arrow pointing, that is your total tax levy for your annual tax levy ordinance. That is what you see on your, your tax levy ordinance that has already been approved by first reading at October 12th, and then for second reading for October 26th. The debt service purpose underneath in gray shows that these are the debt service amounts by the originating bond ordinance. Anything that's not levied would be abated. So on the tax levy for 2022, the 2018 bond has the entire amount for 2022. So the debt service amount as presented is levied completely. The 2019 bond is a split between fire stations fund and the utilities fund, and so the portion that relates to utilities fund is being, is abated for 2022. So what that means is the full amount is not levied, it's abated with other revenues. And so at the bottom line there, you have a $14,787, $737,000 tax levy. And feel free to jump in with any questions as we move through. I'll move to the next slide. I think the historical look is, is rather important as well, and we spent some time through our one-on-one meetings, and we spent a lot of time at a department level as well, when we meet with departments, to take a look back and see how far we've come. One of those noteworthy items are the police and fire pension funds. As of 2020, IMRF, and I'll just footnote this before I move to police and fire, but the IMRF pension fund, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, had about a, almost 100% funded status for 2020 in the 2020 audit. For 2020, police pension fund had a 64% funded status, and fire pension had a 58% funded status. IMRF is a funded program for Illinois municipal employees, police and fire, or for police and fire. And I think what's important about the police and the fire pension fund is to see that track record and that history. Back in year 2010, it was about 40% status, funded status, because of the commitment from the property tax levy amounts year over year, and then also the additional reserves that have been accumulated through good financial stewardship. City councils have been able to make additional contributions to IMRF, police, and fire over the years. You can see the track record, to get from 40% all the way almost up to 60% for, for fire, and then 64% for police pension fund. What this also means is that, that track record, that funding policy trying to get to about 70%, you can see the, the results of that progress. And it's been very highly favorable from credit rating agencies, particularly when we issued debt. That was one of the things that they were particularly looking at when they were giving us our credit, credit rating. Debt outstanding, obviously, is, is something that we track, and you always have a copy that within a lot of our budget documents. It'll be a refresher for folks looking at this, but it's always important to footnote everything as we look at the entire budget. We have three bond issues out there, so the bond issues have gone from several to just three now. Our annual debt service payments were about 2.4 to 2.5 million a couple of years ago. They're now at about 2 million, so that means your principal and interest payments per year are about $2 million across various funds. And then in 2024, it drops down to about a little over or a little under 1.5 million. Where that's significant is that your 2012 bond, which is funded through the general fund for about 700,000, will eventually be paid in full as of beginning of your 2024 budget. The 2018 and 2019 bonds, as I've mentioned, are paid with property taxes and utilities funds in their outlet listed here as far as which year they're paid down. So coming up, we have a couple of dates, as we've mentioned, the remaining dates on the calendar. Next week will be the October 26th city council meeting. We'll have the property tax abatement, the approved tax levy for the library, and the approved tax levy for the city. November 9th is a city council meeting to accept the 2022 library budget and adopt the 2022 city budget. When those items are completed, and we're nearing completion of those, the city attorney then completes all the filings for the budget for Cook County. It's really important to get that in timely basis for the tax levy to be filed. Finance then, finance staff completes all the final filings for the city's website, including a total compensation report that's required to be done and completed about nine days, 10 days after the budget's approved or adopted. And then we will also post the 2022 budget and make it available for anyone who requests one. I would like to also just commend Dave Ruff for his budget presentation and all the work he's done throughout the years. We work real closely here at the city and the library together to make sure it's a very seamless process, and because we also have a tax levy for both and all the documents that are, are required for both agencies. In the next slide, I wanted to review high level for the 2022 budget, the general fund revenues all-in and also expenditures. The general fund revenues are 34.6 million, which is a 1.7% increase or 580,000 year over year. So when you're just looking at budget to budget, 2022 to 2021, there's a two, or 1.7% increase for revenues. For general fund expenditures, they're, they come in at 36.1 million, and it's a 2% increase for 718,000 year over year. The general fund is in parameters at 27% and continues to deliver high-quality services. I think what's important as well is we have been holding the line wherever we need to, maintaining all the contractual obligations that the city needs to do, and then also looking at differences and changes in the future as far as looking at social services, looking at Salvation Army grants and those kinds of things. It does continue community events, and we are looking always at outside funding for opportunities to see what we can be reimbursed for, see what we can look at in the future. The next slide shows the percentage of general fund balance to operating expenditures over time. These are audited financial results by percentage, just to show you the progress in transition over time. Back in 2007 to about 2010, the city was in a negative fund balance position. There were many changes at that time, and many changes on the revenue side and expenditure changes over time that were, allowed us to get to the point of where we are. We've been trending at about a 32% fund balance at the end of the year for the audited financials when we just look at the general fund. We're also looking at a 32% or 32.1%. We're also looking at a 32% or 32.1% for 2021 in our current estimates. And I think what's important with that is to know that while we provide those estimates now, and we're sitting here in September, October, that our monthly financials that we provide to the city council continues to stress test and make sure that we're looking at all of the revenue line items. Should anything change, we would get back to the city council immediately as we have done through the COVID-19 pandemic. But even with last year for 2020, we were able to end at the year about 32% or about three to four months reserves. We're confident that those items of ending at the fund balance a little bit higher than the midpoint will continue. And it's important to continue the financial stewardship of making sure that we're reporting back with the financials each month, so in case something changes, we can report back to you. But it's just important to show the track record of the general fund. The 2022 general fund revenues by source, we showed you at entity-wide level. We're bringing it now down to just the general fund. And as you take a look at this pie chart, it changes a little bit. So if you recall, that the total property taxes for all of the funds together are about 26%. This shows about 35%. And that's because the majority of our property taxes come into the general fund. The next level or layer would be local taxes. So that's anything from sales tax, food and beverage tax, your local home rule tax, telecommunications, hotel tax. Those kinds of things are categorized by local taxes. And we have all that gritted out in the budget document, but just showing you a high level. Intergovernmental revenues and charges for services and so on. It's good to see the diverse mix again, and I think that's an important takeaway. For the general fund expenditures by type, again, we are a service provider, a service entity, a municipality, and we provide high-quality services to our community. And so you would expect to see a large portion of that to be salary and benefits and pension and everything that flows with that. Again, a very small portion for supplies, debt service, and so on. And this is in the general fund. This is a slide that's actually included in the budget and brief document, and it is the COVID-19 impact on finances. And I think what we discussed at a previous committee, the whole meeting, is that we've been open for business ever since the COVID-19 pandemic started back in March of 2020. And what's really important is how we've responded and pivoted during that crisis. We were there for the community. We've been there for residents. We've been there for businesses. We have always new ways to think about how we change things in the future, to be very flexible going forward, and to think of the new technologies that we can come away with through this pandemic. I think what's really important is that we continue delivering our high-quality services across our entire city and community. And I think all of our departments should be commended for their impeccable professionalism during that time period and as they always do, no matter what. So there are a couple of items for city council discussion and some takeaways from some of the budget briefings that we held with city council. One item is just an overall item for council, and I'll just go through these if you would like, Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
And then you could revisit. One is just, are there any discussion items responding to the 2022 budget as you have started to review and completed your review? The next is number two, is several council members have asked for what if we were to take a look at the tax levy and increase it by a certain amount? That came from when we went in June at the June committee, the whole meeting. We had a budget parameter discussion where we were looking at a 2% tax levy increase, and given the fact that we are somewhat in an inflationary environment, those are the kinds of discussion items that some council felt at least to take a look at. Director Dave Ruff had mentioned about balloon tax levies, and we've had some track record. We've had to substantially increase tax levies in the past. That was really to respond to pension increases that we had to attend to. I think that over time, incremental change has been palatable and something that past councils and current councils always want to take a look at, and that's what they, that you do. At the same point, there is no tax levy increase in this budget. We felt confident and comfortable with how the tax levy and the budget was able to be presented without the tax levy increase. At the same point, small incremental change does make sense over time to address some of the inflationary issues. In this document, we did put together what it looks like, for instance, if it's a 0.25% increase, it's $36,000, and then the total levy and so on, just to give some ideas to city council as you're reviewing. I'll leave it there for just a moment, and maybe, let's see here. You want to pause here, Mayor Protem, or to continue on?
I know you're going to get into the refuse fund next. Why don't we, we'll go through everything so we have the whole picture, and then we'll go back to each of them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next slide is going to show just really more for informational than anything, but certainly with Public Works Director and other staff involved here, and also for council's knowledge that, as we discussed in June, the refuse fund is below the fund balance parameters and have been trending that way. The fund balance for the refuse fund is a 30% to 50% fund balance, which means that you take 30% to 50% of the expenditures, and that's what you should have in your reserve. So it is operating below the fund balance policy at about 26%. The current monthly refuse rate is $29.95 per month. It has not been increased since 2014. To give you a little history back on that, we have been able to, at one point, I think it was 3250, if I'm recalling correctly, we've gone from rate increases, brought it back down similar to what the library has gone through, and we've raised rates and brought them back down. There's ways to look at that. Why I mention that, because there has been no rate increase for a period of time. Your costs do continue to go up over time, and so naturally, we're at that juncture to make some decisions. Not that there could be decisions necessarily with this 2022 budget, but I think some thought process and some of the discussions that we've been having with the budget and briefings that at some point to take a look at this a little bit closer. The refuse carts, as mentioned, are budgeted in the 2022 budget in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund along with the carts as well, so the monthly fee for the carts in order for us to change over to a cart system for recycling and refuse. In the 2022 budget, we don't have additional transfers in. We don't have rate increases, and at some point, a closer look does need to take place at the refuse fund. When we were talking one-on-one and two-on-two with our aldermen through the budget briefings, we thought that the initial path was to start to look at more of a in-depth look at it and start to have future two-on-two discussions with aldermen. Ultimately, the path forward is to provide a solid timeline for the cart distribution, cart decisions, and potential funding items for the refuse fund. This can take place after a budget is adopted, to give you some light on that. The city councils in the past, we've had rate increases mid-year. We've transitioned rate increases, and we faced rate increases just to make sure there aren't big swings. There's also potential for transfers into the refuse fund to accommodate the need for funding. It is really noted tonight for information more than anything to the city council and to staff, because I know that it's important to start the process in the planning part, given the fact that we're in the lower end of the refuse fund range, and making sure that we have adequate resources. A financially responsible area is to make sure you've got funding in that fund to fund the services that you need to provide. So this is one area that our thought process with Public Works Director Horn, interim finance director, myself, and others in the Public Works Department is to start the process first with an in-depth look with two-on-two meetings with the city council, start the project timeline, and look at the types of opportunities that you can look at to start figuring out how to increase some of the fund balance in the refuse fund, and then ultimately to switch over to carts, because some of those decisions need a little more in-depth discussion. I know Chief, temporary city manager Chief Noacke was in one of the discussions as well that we're starting to work on that timeline as you transition. So Director Horn, you want to add just a little bit more and anything at this point?
Just in case.
And certainly, you know, feel free to jump in, but that's kind of the initial thought. We wanted to bring that back to council to see if we were on the right path with that, with the implementation part, and making sure that you knew that we had a plan as well to start the communication with residents, to make sure that everyone's informed of the process and the timeline as well.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So based off of that discussion, it sounds like, Director Horn, this would not be the time to go into depth for this particular subject. Is that correct?
I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I think the more in-depth conversations will come during the two-on-two meetings, but certainly I'll take a stab at whatever you have a question on.
So I would want to know then what your thoughts are at this point in the short term and the long term to address the, I guess, the lack of adhering to the fund balance policy, really.
Well, if I can, if you don't mind, Alderman Soike, I might just take that one, only because it's not so much a lack of not to the fund balance policy. We saw that trend line come through in 2019, 2020. We were reporting back that at some point, we would have to take a look at a rate increase. I think you even mentioned that, Director Horn. So it's not adhering to the fund balance policy. In fact, our auditor is very fully aware that we were trying to look at an implementation timeline, so I don't think it's so much that. I think it's this juncture moment to kind of figure out, is it a rate increase to cover the cost of the carts? Is it a transfer in, as Mayor Gallo had also discussed in a couple of different various meetings, to make sure that transfers in might cover some of these costs? And then taking a look with the new finance team as well about changes perhaps to some of the looks to the fund. Remember, too, that the refuse fund, pretty much the revenue comes in from the fees, and it pays what it should, which is services. So getting back to your point, the refuse fund is just at the lower end, but it's something that can be accomplished through some planning.
Yeah, and I would just echo Finance Director Gallagher, when, as staff, we are looking at all the different potential options that we can think of to offset any rate increase if we can find them. As a matter of fact, have a meeting with the city attorney, Wolf, tomorrow to discuss our transfer station and some of the agreements that were part of that lease agreement. So we're looking at every avenue that we can think of. But I think to Director Gallagher's point, that more in-depth conversation is probably better with the two-on-twos, because I think we can speak a little more freely about all the different pieces of the fund.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Sure.
So why don't we just do these, since you've already started on the refuse fund, we'll take these a little bit backwards on the refuse fund. Does anybody else have any? Alderman O'Brien?
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. I was just going to kind of combine the two, is that, I guess, I'm just starting to get concerned with the writing on the wall if we don't have some type of increase in the near future, is that eight years of no increase or going into an eighth year of no increase for refuse, three-year hold at zero property tax levy. Clearly, residents have become accustomed to the exceptional service they get. It's almost become accepted or expected, I should say. And even talking to our friends, family, neighbor, and communities, they all say, we want Rowland Meadows services. Comes at a cost. And rightfully so, we have granted new contracts for public works for outstanding firefighters. Police will be coming up soon. Everybody's engaged and appropriately for wage increases, there's got to be a cost. And I'm concerned, I heard Melissa Gallagher reference it, to Dave referencing the balloon tax levy. I don't know how it's palatable with my peers, but I'd be worried if we keep holding everything at zero, we're going to have a refuse increase, we're going to have a property tax increase, we're going to have both at a peak here sometime soon. Not necessarily with the make changes for 2022. I'm not saying that right now with the property tax levy. Melissa and the staff was able to hold it at zero, but if you look, general fund's down by about 2%, $36 million, expenses $34 million, incomes about $1.5 million, refuse is down. I think it was, I was trying to look at my notes here, 32 to 27 in the fund balance, almost a 5% drop in a year for the fund balance and general fund. I think we've got to start looking at some options here. Otherwise, I don't know that our residents would be palatable. I haven't talked to any directly on this, but a 5% property increase and a $3 refuse increase, that's a lot to take on at a time. So I'm more for one for a half a percentage here, a percentage there, because over time, you also lose the compounding factor, is that when you're talking millions of dollars, that's going to gain interest, which allows us to cover some of the costs as well. And additionally, and I would defer to Melissa Gallagher on this, I think it could impact our credit rating. So instead of getting great deals when we borrow money, if these fund balances keep dropping, it could cost us more when we borrow money, too. So it's a complicating factor in a multiple avenues, is the way that I'm seeing it. That's just my thought, Mr. Protem. I don't think we have to do any action tonight to say, yep, let's do property tax levy of 1% and refuse of 50 cents, but I'd like us to start thinking about that is, I don't know how sustainable it is, eight years, no increase in refuse, and three years, no increase in property tax. That bubble's going to burst sometime, and I can't see going back to residents saying, oh, 5% increase this year because we haven't done anything the last three.
Alderman Soike?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do respectfully disagree with Alderman O'Brien at this point, and I look forward to speaking with staff regarding other options than increasing the tax levy. I understand where you're coming from. I understand that we do have a responsibility to make sure that our bills are paid. I just believe that, it sounds like the staff is reviewing multiple options beyond raising the property tax levy. So before revisiting that, I would like to hear in more detail, and it sounds like we have some meetings coming that we'll be scheduling regarding this particular fund and these services and how they impact the budget going forward. I would be in favor of holding that 0% tax increase at this point before considering any increases.
I would absolutely agree. Because I'm not saying raise anything this year, I'm just asking for us to start looking that maybe in 2023, we have to have some type of increase. I'm with you, is that as long as we can hold for 2022, the budget's been worked out, thanks to all the department heads, I'm with you on 2022. Just something that I want us to start looking to for 2023.
And anybody else on that? I'll just throw in my two cents as well. I agree with Alderman O'Brien. I had the same conversation with Melissa regarding just the concern of having to do too high of an increase at one time, increasing both the garbage rate and the tax levy, those types of things. For 2022, I 100% want to stay at the 0% tax levy with the idea of continuing to explore avenues, whether it be on the revenue or the expense side of the refuse fund. And based on the timing of the whole retrofitting and the carts and all of that, I would think at a future committee of the whole, once we have all the information we need to make that decision, we can determine if there's going to need to be any sort of a mid-year refuse fund increase, or to hold it off until a future date, which is my kind of two cents there. I'm going to go backwards here a little bit. Are there, okay, so we talked about, pretty much about the tax levy and the refuse. Are there any discussion items from the 2022 proposed budget other than that that you'd like to discuss?
I wanted to ask my colleagues if there was anything else that wasn't covered in these three or four items during their budget meetings that they wanted to bring before the full council tonight?
The...
Looks like not. Looks like not.
I mean, we had a short two-on-two regarding the refuse fund. Alderman O'Brien and myself were there, but I believe we pretty much stated everything that we mentioned. And really, the outcome of the whole thing was to get back and get the timeline of when these different expenses are going to hit. The refuse fund, it appears that the, a lot of the expense from the initial, starting up of the can collection and all that is out of the vehicle fund. So there's no impact to the refuse fund. So, but that's about all that came out of it right now, just basically waiting for the timeline on the retrofitting of that.
No, I think that's exactly it. As Director Horn and Gallagher said, I think it sounds like more two-on-two meetings that just work schedule-wise that way. But no, that was exactly what Melissa and Rob said is what we had talked about, that timeframe. That was the questions that we had had, and obviously Rob's been, if you could bring the big Post-it note from his office to chambers, we'd probably be able to see the draft of it because it sounds like there's a pretty dynamic Post-it note in your office.
I don't know if it's dynamic, but that is a big Post-it.
Right, and it also seems like there may be an avenue that you just need to, Alderman, or sorry, Director Horn just needs to discuss with attorneys. So...
Yeah, I just, I just want to give the council the confidence that staff's doing everything we can to try and figure out alternative means. That's all. I do have one item to add, Protem.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem. One thing, it's, I think it would be considered budget-related, but just something, I think especially probably after the first year, first of the year, when we get our new leadership on board and I think it would be good for the council to start thinking about strategic planning ideas as a result of the potential development to our north. I think it's a good idea to at least be thinking about that. We don't want to be caught flat-footed as a community as to what the potential opportunities are there. I think that would be a good thing to just put in the back of your mind and be considering, you know, what you envision potentially or what would be important to you as a resident as far as how the community might be affected by that development. So again, we don't know all the details yet, and obviously that is something that will be pursued by whoever the new manager is. But it's just a good idea since you gave me the opportunity to present other items that we might suggest that would be one.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else?
I'll second what Director Horn said. That's what we've been talking about at EDC too, is making sure that we can be as proactive as we can for whatever might come in. So we've got council and EDC.
I was just thinking that was...
Okay, I guess if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn or leave. Okay, Alderman Bud Matts and Alderman McHale on favor.
On.
Okay, we're done.